Good evening, everybody. This is the Groton Board of Education Special Policy Committee meeting of Monday, July 21st, 2025. It is 6:00 PM on the nose, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Before reviewing the minutes, since I've been told that some people may be attending and others may be trying to view our thing later, let me welcome everybody who's come and shown interest. We appreciate it very, very much. We're going to start with a review of the minutes. Andrea, have you had a chance to see the minutes?
I have been in...
I know you've had other fish to fry, as they say. So I will move the minutes if I don't get a second. We'll just have to deal with the minutes at the next meeting, so don't... So I'm going to move the minutes of our Tuesday, May 13th meeting as provided to us. Is there a second?
Can I second them if I didn't see them? I don't even know if I saw them, and that's the truth, you know?
Well, I'll tell you what, since you're not sure that you've seen them, why don't we postpone? I don't think there's... I don't think we're going to get more than a five-yard penalty for bouncing this back to...
I'm very sorry.
So we're going to defer the reading of the minutes of the May 13th meeting to defer to the August Policy Committee meeting. That's no problem. And welcome, Jody. I thought I saw Jody. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. So our first order of business today is old business. At our last meeting, we discussed the proposed policy, P6163.33, which is about live animals in the classroom, specifically therapy dogs. At that meeting, my sense of the board, the committee's meeting, is that while everybody was very positive and had no reservations about the therapy dogs, there were a couple of questions about the specific use of language in the document. And Susan and Lea said they'd get together and work it over, and we now have the revised document in front of us. Lea, I turn it over to you.
Do you want me to go through the policy document?
Would you give a quick overview of the... In case somebody wants to watch this, presume that not everybody here has heard this. Keep it to, you know, a few minutes, but you know, cover the reasons that we thought about doing it, the possibilities that we have, opportunities and challenges, and then we can get into the document.
Okay. So the purpose of the program is to provide a positive impact on the school climate and attendance at Groton Middle School. So the idea behind the program is to provide a positive impact in terms of students and staff in order to create kind of an avenue for people to communicate with each other and connect. And then students can learn, you know, skills about empathy, how to appropriately care for Willow. And then also, there's evidence of reducing stress and anxiety. And kids who may feel alone or isolated can also connect with Willow. So the idea is that I would be the handler, and then she would be in counseling sessions with myself. Or if there's a crisis that comes up and another counselor thinks that it's a good fit, and then...
Excuse me for interrupting. I'm going to assume this means that you're a counselor, so if you're not...
Yes.
Okay, identify that so people understand the context.
So I'm a school coun... One of the six school counselors in the middle school. So we... Each of us has our own caseload. We split the grade in half, so there's two counselors per grade. And then we also work with social workers and school psychologists. So it would... Willow would be a resource for the mental health staff and also to any faculty or staff who may see it as a fit in like their classroom or another activity that they're doing as part of their curriculum. So she's gone through all the training. I don't know if you want me to talk about that.
No, don't need to do the specifics, but what I'm understanding you to say, correct me if I'm mistaken, is that she's been a... Been through a certified training program and passed with flying paws?
Mm-hmm. Yes. So Pet Partners is the volunteer organization, but in order for her to be a facility dog at a school and be there for the school day, there's an additional organization that she needs to be a part of, and that would be where the insurance piece comes from as well.
Okay. So would you like to put the document on the screen and walk us through it with the changes? And if you could blow that up a little bit for those of us just a tad older than you. Thank you very much.
Is that okay? Okay.
Does that work for you, Andrea? One little larger? You're muted.
Is that good? Let's see.
Okay, I think you're saying it's okay. So what is different in this version than what we had before?
We changed the use of... Using the word "use" for "therapy dog" and changed it to "partnering with." So on the first line, "The Board of Education supports teachers, other qualified school personnel, who would be the owner, handler, to partner with a therapy dog for the benefit of the students, subject to the conditions of the policy." I think it said before, like, "the use of a therapy dog." And then it was added that they're registered as a therapy dog team with their handler. So therapy dogs aren't certified. They're registered through an organization such as Pet Partners. And then... I think that was the only changes on the document.
Okay.
And then I think we were... Oh, and we deleted the... Do you remember the box with the, like, other language that could be used? We were talking about before, so that's been deleted.
Okay.
Just to avoid confusion, so that wording, we don't need.
Excellent. Okay, Andrea, did you have any questions?
No. No. How do I get one, that's all?
Well, you know what? Maybe I'll bring my dog to our board meeting as a therapy dog. Wouldn't hurt.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I am thrilled that we're going to be having this opportunity. And perhaps there'll be somebody in one of our other schools that also has the time and training and trained companion that we can expand this as a former hospital chaplain. The key word you said was relieving anxiety. Absolutely different circumstances, but it works wonderfully well. So I'm all in favor of this.
Absolutely. Fabulous.
I do have a question. Forgive me, because I have not had a chance to look at this policy, because I've been so concerned with the AI one. But Lea, what kind of notification do we have for parents, you know, when we're bringing in a therapy dog for students, you know, in a classroom, for example? And I only ask that because I know that the intention here is to... Maybe one of the intentions is to reduce anxiety, you know, for students. But I know that in some cases, maybe a dog may increase anxiety depending upon what history they have with animals. And so, you know, there may want... You may, in a situation, want to let families know that there's going to be a dog in a classroom situation. So I'm sure there must be something in this policy. Again, I haven't... Forgive me, I have not had a chance to review it. But is there some kind of... Some letter or some kind of notification that we're sending home in advance?
So there's other attachments to this where there's a sign to put out, like, at the front of the school that there's a working...
Can you post the attachments for Anne-Marie to see? Because it's a great question.
And then I think there would also be an opt-out, like, permission slip at the beginning of the year. So if parents aren't comfortable or for students not comfortable, I would have a list of students that have opted out. That way I'm aware. And we wouldn't be going into that classroom or we would come up with something else depending on if it's a fear or if it's allergies. That's... That way I'm aware of who specifically those students are. So I plan on gathering a list and have data on that. And then also talking to the teacher beforehand and sending out a parent square to parents beforehand if I am visiting a classroom. I think would also be a good idea, just so they have the heads up on that. Yeah, I can share... I think there are a few attachments.
We had three of them, I believe. Three forms.
So this is something that the owner would submit to get permission from the superintendent to have the dog on premises and the services and functions that they would be serving. And then we'll get to the other one. And I think Susan was saying too that we can incorporate that into the regulations as well. This is the second form, so a letter going out that's saying that there will be a therapy dog in the school these times and days. And they may be changed at a certain point. And then, you know, just more information about Willow. And I can work with the GMS administration to, you know, make this more specific or, you know, entailing any details that they think we should add to this letter. I do think it outlines, you know, the... You know, I do plan on doing, like, sessions during our SOAR meetings to, like, explain how the students should approach Willow and that there should only be three students up at a time in the hallway. And I was planning on having her in a heel, so that means she's looking up at me as we're going down the hallway, and the students have to ask as they're passing, you know, if they can pet her, just to... For them to develop that habit and how to approach a dog. And then the last attachment, I think, is the... And that's... Yeah, that's the letter. So I think that was all three. Does that answer your question? I think that we need to be clear...
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
...we're going into. Yeah, I think that parents should know ahead of time.
Okay, are there any more questions? I'll invite Clint and Jody. If... I know this is outside your particular expertise, but your administration and one of our outside advisors. And I welcome any comments.
This is Clint. I have no comment.
Nor do I. I think it sounds great. Great opportunity.
Okay. Well, if that's the case...
Matthew.
Yes?
Matthew, I might add that at least 25 years ago, we had a special ed teacher at one of the schools where I was principal. And she had... I think they were seeing eye dogs. And she would bring them... But this was before we had all this other stuff about, you know, all the paperwork we have to do. But she would bring them into the classroom, and they were just an amazing asset for the children. I just wanted to add that.
What would you... I'll invite you to add a motion to pass this for a first reading, if you'd like to.
I move that we pass this for a first reading.
Okay, and I will second the motion that we, the Policy Committee, approve Policy 6163.33, Instruction: Live Animals in the Classroom, Therapy Dogs, to be sent with a positive recommendation to the full Board of Education. So it's been moved by Andrea and seconded by Matthew. Is there any discussion? Is there any other discussion? Beverly, we just concluded a nice review of the Policy of 6163.33, Live Animals in the Classroom, Therapy Dogs. Would you like to share anything before we take a vote? In that case, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of passage of P6163.33 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries 2 to 0 to 0. Oh, I should have pointed out our... So that will be going, but let me use this opportunity to say that I received a letter about an hour ago from our third member, Ian Thomas, who said that "unanticipated circumstances precludes his joining us tonight." So that's why we only have two voting. Thank you very much, Lea. Anything you want to add before we send you free?
I don't think so. Thank you very much, everyone, for your support and time.
Okay, you have a blessed night.
All right, thank you, too.
Okay. So we now go to our second piece of business, Discussion of Policy 61413273, Generative AI, also called generative artificial intelligence. I'd like to give a little background on how this has gone, particularly in case somebody wants to listen in to this. Artificial intelligence is a public label for... Correct me when it... Not if, but when I'm wrong, Clint. Just jump in and correct me, okay? For a algorithm called large language. It's a large language model that uses analysis of linguistics to predict the next... To do a search, but goose it up from a Google search, which just looks through documents to... And identifying documents to actually answering questions and researching topics to a much deeper level than a Google-type search. It is a technology that is growing rapidly. I won't say exponentially, but that's the way it feels sometime, sometimes. And whatever we would do would probably... Will be... Would need to be reviewed on a quite frequent basis. One year, two years, but that'll be built into our discussion. We first started discussing this about six or eight months ago. About five months ago, I conducted a bunch of research and articles on what's being done in the state of Connecticut, what's being done in other states, some even what's being done overseas, and have shared a packet of documents with our committee members and our administrative partners. We started actually working on this as a committee, I believe, four months ago, to actually start discussing this. We went through some discussions. One of the points of... I'll call it friction, but I mean it in the most positive sense, is what constitutes the realm of policy, which is the board's responsibility, and what constitutes the realm of operations, which is the administration's responsibility? And how can we frame the what that the board might like? If they... If we were to pass something and the board were to approve it, that would define the what of what would be in a policy as terms of intended outcomes and leave the process of how this would be implemented entirely in the hands of the administration? That could sometimes be a delicate balance, but we've had a very good team. We've also been very lucky. We have two people who are serving as advisory members of our committee, Clint Kennedy, who's the head of IT, and Dr. Kennedy is also far better versed... I would wager, though I wouldn't wager a lot, because I'm not a betting person, probably knows more than anybody else in the district about AI. And we've complemented this with Jody Goller, who's on screen as well, whom people from Groton may not know. Jody is here wearing two hats. He's a chair of the Committee at State Education Department, reviewing the use of artificial intelligence for the state. He is also the head of Policy, the Policy Branch of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. So he's had a lot of... A lot... I don't know how many decades of experience helping form policies on a state and district-wide basis. And he is a recovering school superintendent, I might add. So that's some background for who we are and what we've been doing. We've been through three revisions so far. Most recently, we had a meeting, I think, on the 2nd of July, of Clint, myself, and Anne-Marie, our Assistant Superintendent, Anne-Marie Mancini... Excuse me, Dr. Mancini. I'm sorry, I've become too familiar. I apologize. To discuss the strategy and the particulars. And from this, Clint prepared a... An amalgam of our conversation, our working group. This I sent out to everybody on our committee and the administration and our board chair, asking anybody who wanted to to make additional comments, et cetera. And I have prepared in the last couple of days a composite revision that has tried to be faithful to the comments we've gotten from Assistant Superintendent Mancini, Clint Kennedy, Andrea, and myself. Mr. Thomas had said he was going to bring some things to the meeting tonight, but he's unable to be here. I will, at the end of our discussion, before we do any vote, I will be certain to get... He did make a couple of comments, and I wanted to be sure that his comments are shared for the record with all of us. So having said that, we now have the composite revision ahead of us. And I guess my first question is, are we satisfied with the structure of the proposed revised composite draft? Is there some element that we have overlooked that should be added to the elements that we have? We currently have five elements: a statement of purpose, some conversation about a collaborative approach, elements of operational concern to be addressed in regulations, that means by administration, a mandated review cycle, and supplemental policy element. Is there anything else anybody would like to bring up that we have not covered, that we should be covering? I think Robert's Rules of Order says I should do that three times, but I'll just ask one more time. Anybody have anything else to contribute in terms of structure? Hearing nothing, I will presume that my hearing hasn't gone bad and that we can then go now to the review of the composite revision. I'm going to come... The first thing on that review, on my copy... Can you go a... Okay, my copy has a header that you can't see, and it listed as P6131.32.73 and 4118.53. Sometimes we put a policy in two different places for ease of its being found. And there was a suggestion that we expand this to include something, a designation in the 5,000 series, which relates to students, so that if a parent was searching for it, they could find it more easily. I'll come back to that at the end. I'd rather spend our time on the substance, but we'll come back to that on the end. On the statement of purpose...
Matthew, can you enlarge it? I can't see it.
Okay, that's... I can ask Clint if he can do that. Is that better?
Somewhat.
Can we do it even larger, Clint?
Good. Very good.
Great. Okay, so just for your knowledge, where you see yellow, that's a suggestion from Anne-Marie, from Dr. Mancini. Something in blue is from Clint Kennedy. Something in green is from Andrea. And something in some kind of purplish color is from me. So that's why we have the different colors, so we can identify who's made which suggestion. So other than Clint, if you could put in a hyphen between "computer" and "generated," that would be our first correction. May they all be that straightforward? Now, I believe it was Clint. I got so much paperwork. There is the third paragraph. We initially had three paragraphs, and we have a fourth paragraph now. And this, I believe, was suggested by Clint. Am I not correct?
Sorry, I lost you guys for a second. I gotta reshare. Forgive me.
Okay. The paragraph that starts "Generative AI refers to any subset," et cetera, that was yours, Clint, wasn't it?
Correct.
Okay, good. So we've added that paragraph that Clint suggested, and we reordered some of the paragraphs at Dr. Mancini's suggestion. Anybody want to make any comments on these... On the section on statement of purpose or need? And it's open to all of our participants. Don't have to be a member. Anne-Marie, I'm particularly interested in any comments you have, because as Assistant Superintendent, I think this is going to fall under your purview, isn't it?
All right. First of all, I'd like to clarify. I like it. I much prefer when you refer to me as Anne-Marie rather than Dr. Mancini. And then, secondly, are we just talking about Part 1?
Right now, we're just talking about Part 1. We're going to go one section at a time, unless you have a better idea.
No, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, as you've revised it so far, I'm really pleased. Also, like Dr. Ackerman's suggestions in terms of what she believes should be deleted. And I like the addition that I believe is in a teal color blue. I think that's from Clint.
That's correct.
So I like, as it's right now revised as is, I'm really happy with Part 1.
Okay, so let... Let me... What about you, Andrea? I don't want to dominate this.
No, I just want to make... To make clear that most of my suggestions, with the exception of things like Anne-Marie just mentioned, are in the grammatical and, you know, just language arena. That's most of it.
And it is greatly appreciated. Clint?
I'm... The only comment I had is we do have a "such as" in there, which we call out as specific tool. I kept going back and forth on that. That is probably...
Where are you? Could you point out where you are in the document?
Sorry, in the teal section where it says "such as ChatGPT."
Yes, okay.
So ChatGPT is arguably the most well-known tool in this genre and so forth. I always hesitate to put some type of commercial name within a policy statement. However, I think it does add some value as far as grounding people when they know what we're talking about and so forth. But I would not be opposed to either comments or the removal of that. I see pros and cons to it. Jody, please.
Often, you'll see from attorneys, they'll have language that will say something like, "including but not limited to ChatGPT," or... Or I like the idea, Clint, that you're using a familiar model. It certainly is a familiar model. You can either address that in the regulations and get that to a level of specificity in the regulations that might provide that clarity. But again, I'm not sure that your community would understand large language.
LLM, sure.
But including but not limiting to... Not included but not limited to would be something that would extend those kinds of examples.
And I might add, perhaps we do... I don't think we need to list 20 different platforms. Well, there probably aren't 20, but there's certainly six or eight platforms. I don't think we need to list them all. We could list A, comma, B... We could list A comma, B comma, et cetera.
I, I appreciate the comment from Jody and, and would be happy to take a stab at just a tweak of that language, if that makes sense.
But you go ahead and put it right in now. Take your stab now, let's, let's do it.
Do we want to make it as simple as such as, but not limited?
You can say including, including but not limited to.
Beautiful.
Chat G P T.
If you want to make it stand out, you could put it as in parentheses, but this is fine grammatically.
Actually, grammatically, I know that Dr. Ackerman will back me up here. You don't need not limited to, just put including.
I, 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 I don't disagree with that. I was typically, when you read something, the attorney's right. It'll, it'll have that language, but including works as well.
Yeah, I would, I would agree.
What do you think about the idea of chat G P T comma, one more platform, it's, and then an et cetera?
Say that again?
So it would say chat G P T comma copilot or Claude or whichever one, comma, et cetera. I'm not advocating for any particular one.
No, don't use this, if you're not going to name them, don't, don't use et cetera. If you're not naming them, don't refer to them.
Okay, that's fine. Are we comfortable with these, with these changes in?
I am.
Do we make any further reference to large language models in the document? Or do you plan to have large language models be defined in your regulations in some way? I mean, I'm not advocating that, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out whether we need L L M, what the purpose of that is in this document.
I think it's, the reason I've chosen to include it is trying to tell this story of artificial intelligence in a specific kind. It's the same reason why I typically prefer the term generative artificial intelligence as opposed to just the general context of A I. I'm trying to be as specific as we can without getting too, too nerdy or too geeky. I'm trying to strike that balance.
Okay. That's fine. I had a question Andrea about, you, you made two suggestions for removing. And I agree with your second suggestion. It should be. I'm in the, I'm, I'm on the very last paragraph of the statement of purpose where I understand you to have suggested that we should remove the following sentence, it should, it, meaning this document, should be understood in conjunction with the accompanying regulations.
I'm still not following where you are.
There are, the very last paragraph before we get to collaborative approach.
Okay.
Clint has highlighted it in gray, that last sentence.
Oh, I see.
And I, I'm fine with that being removed if, if that's what you'd like.
Yeah, it, I don't, I don't think it's necessary and I don't think it belongs.
Okay.
I am proceeding with removing this.
Yeah, that's fine. I do have a, I do have a question about the first in the what is now the third paragraph, the one that starts at as with all technologies? Could you highlight that in gray, Clint?
First pair, first sentence?
First sentence. The considerations that I'm referring to, responding, ensuring ROTS responsible and ethical use as it relates to mitigating bias, promoting transparency, ensuring the benefits are accessible to all, the specifics of that, I understood to be in the domain of regulations. But I thought, well, I, I still think, but I'm amenable to your suggestion if you, if you feel this way. I think it's helpful for a policy to lay out the rationale for what we're doing. And it was in that spirit that I put in that sentence. If you have some problem with it, we can take it out, but I do personally think it strengthens the document. And Jody, Clint, Anne Marie and Andrea, please weigh in. It's not a hill I'm prepared to die on, I just wanted to express my point of view.
If anybody else has something to say, then let, let me go last. Okay, I, I just think that it's not policy. It, it's, it's a, a nice thought, but I don't, I think, I don't think it belongs here. I don't even know if it would belong in, as a thought in regulations. I just don't think it, I, I, I think it's true, but I don't think it belongs. It's not policy.
Sometimes I'll, I'll address things like this, Matt, in, in the narrative I write for policies. So it would be, you know, just a sort of a, a summary or a composite piece that would help frame the discussion for boards to discuss policy. So you, you would find a K model policy around this topic would, might include something like this. Frankly, it wouldn't be as well-written as what you have, but that, that's where, that's where I would put it, as a way of framing the policy itself.
Well, in, in that case, we could talk about that at the board meeting, we should, that, that idea, that thought should, could be presented. But I don't, I don't believe it belongs here.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Okay, well, accepting your wisdom, let me ask Anne Marie this. If we take it out here, would you be comfortable committing to at least discussing these items when you pull together the regulations? I'm not asking you to commit to doing it, but at least considering them.
I mean, I guess we would, we could consider it. It's, it's hard to commit to it now without knowing, you know, exactly where we're going to be with the regulations, but I, I do support, you know, what Dr. Ackerman and, and Mr. Geller is saying right now.
Yeah.
Not believing that it belongs here.
Okay, and, and I'm, and I'm more than willing to, uh, okay, well, I will incline to this, to the committee's request. I may bring it up when we come to discussion with the full board to, to seek some clarification, whether or not. I think it's beneficial, but as I said, this needs to be a product of all of us. So Clint, if you would take that sentence out. And I will just make a note for myself. I'm, can I, is it fair for me to, to infer that, that, that's, the approach is satisfactory to you Andrea? We're taking it out as we propose it and I can talk about it at the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So we're taking it out as of now, correct?
We're taking it out as of now, absolutely.
Matthew, I left it in as a strike through so that you could reference it.
Uh, I've got it on my computer.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else that we want to discuss or are we satisfied with the statement of purpose of need as we thus far massaged it? Do we go on or is there something more? I don't want to rush this.
I propose we continue.
Anne Marie? You're good. Okay, we'll go on to collaborative approach. Any reaction to the changes mainly, mainly made by, suggested by Anne Marie? No, I take that, do I take that back? By Andrea, forgive me, Andrea.
Yeah, I, I don't think we, yeah, we don't need to, to say that we're requesting the superintendent, we're, we're instructing the superintendent, we don't need to say that.
Okay. Anne Marie, any, any comments about anything? Strikeouts, additions?
I don't think so.
Wow. Okay, so are we going to move on now to number three? This is probably the part of it. Okay, the only, there is a note. And let's see, I'm on, I've got to find page three. There's a note and then the body of it is on page three and a little, a couple of sentences on page four. So can we take a look at the introductory note? The, the reason that I had put the bracketed last sentence, which Andrea suggests you're moving, is that I wanted to, somebody who looks in our policy manual, who, who looks at the policy may or may not understand the structure that most policies have regulations that accompany them. We do it so often, that's kind of obvious to us. But I did not want to presume that it would be obvious to the reader. And the intention of the bracketed sentence was to just say flag to the reader of the policy. By the way, you can't look at this by itself, you got to look at it in, in relationship to the regulations. That was my intention. Anne Marie, what do you think?
Respectfully, I don't think it's necessary. I'm sure we do have policies without regulations, but I can't think of one right now. But maybe it could just be, you know, my own, you know, my own experiences that I'm just so used to thinking of, you know, looking at regulations with policies, but that's just my, my lens right now.
And in my view, we can be making notes to the reader, you know, in terms of all kinds of things that they may or not have thought of or whatever. And this is the policy manual, this is not a something that is aimed at instructing readers how to interpret it or where to look. This is what we do and that, any, any other thing should not be in there, in my.
Okay. Jody, Clint?
I, I would just say from my perspective, it's really a business decision on the board's part, the policy, the policy committee, it's, you know, there isn't anything wrong with doing that, it isn't typical practice. I don't disagree with Dr. Ackerman's comment about, it's not the, it's not the policy manuals role to be an instructive tool as to how to use it. But I also understand there may be a political issue related to your community that requires this level of tutelage regarding this particular policy, but that, that really is a, a judgment you would have to make.
I don't, I don't think that it's a question of tutelage. Respectfully, I, I think it's a question that I've been embedded in education, though certainly not K-12 education for thirty, thirty plus years. And I recognize that I view things, the word was lens, I view things through the lens, which can sometimes be a constrictive silo. And I wanted to break out of that silo. I wanted to be sure that somebody who's interested in our policy really gets the full picture. And the full picture is not just the policy, but it's the policy and the regs. Again, I will incline before you, if that's your considered judgment. But I think it's very important personally that we respect that not everybody is familiar with the way policies and regulations are differentiated.
Again, not, not to put more work on people's plate, but again, having this in one policy may sort of, it could indicate to the reader that, wow, this, you're saying this in this policy, it must really mean something, whereas not stated this way in other policies. Maybe it have a preamble, maybe along with the.
Read my mind.
Along with the policy manual on, on your website, you might include a paragraph that helps the reader understand how to read the entire manual.
You know, that's a very good idea. What do you, why does that grab you Andrea? That at our, the beginning of our policy manual, that there be a paragraph to say policies, I mean, we'll figure out different language, policies describe the what and the regulations describe the how it's to happen. One is the creature of the board, the other is the creature of the administration. And if you're interested in any policy, it's a good idea to look at both A and B.
I'm just mad at myself that I let Jody say that and I didn't say it before.
I, I saw you take a breath.
Well, I think that's a great suggestion. I, I will, I will incline before you yet again, Andrea. We will take out the am I now? It should be on page two. Oh, no, no. I will take out the last sentence under the note, under elements of operational concern. And I'll make myself a note to note Ray manual, policy manual because we're all right. It, it needs, in my opinion, it needs to be said, but what I had in mind may not be the best place to say it, so that's great. Okay, we move on to elements for students? Well, we do have more than four that's on the next page, so we'll see them as well, but let's go up on the top. Are there any questions on one to four? Suggestions, additions, deletions?
Could I just make a general comment that, that, again, I've done a lot of reading, I know we all have on, on issues related to policy and A I. And I really applaud thi- this portion of your policy that really delineates the elements as it relates to students and also including teaching staff and, and, and the, the adults as well. I think many, many policies in this area, specifically and only with students, I like the fact that you really are very intentional about including all members of the community.
Clint, you've got some technical expertise, bring it to bear.
I am very comfortable with one through four.
Anne Marie?
I feel good about it.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I feel, I feel good about it, thank you.
Thank you. What about five and six? I added one word in five.
I think those are good, good for me.
Okay, we're in another paragraph on student violation. Student violations. Anne Marie and Andrea believe that this should be in regulations.
I think I'm going to hitch my wagon to that, those comments as well.
I think I generally agree with your hitched wagon. My only question would be, would a number seven, just to make some reference to student usage will vary, appropriate student u- usage will vary according to grade level and developmental status and is, is addressed in the regulations. I, I did not prepare that, I'm just shooting from the hip. I, I did not prepare that. I'm just shooting from the hip.
Well, we do have age developmental appropriateness, appropriate access and equity is number two.
So we'll, we'll push that over to regulations?
I concur.
Okay, to regs. Anne Marie, do you have any sense of timeframe is, assuming we have something and it passes first reading, it looks like it's gonna go to a second reading in some form. I, I guess that's probably the earliest you'd want to invest time in regulation, in designing regulations. You think regulations is something that we could have in place by the beginning of the school year, or is that too much of a demand on your time?
Well, considering right now, it, it's late July. And then, you know, I don't know what the timeframe would be then, bringing this to the full board. I, I thi- I think that would be an aggressive timeline.
Okay. Well, I'm hoping we'll be able to have it to the board for their August policy meeting. I doubt we'll have it ready for, for the first reading even this month, but let's see. Okay, so we've removed the ra- the, that last student violations paragraph in full. Elements for teaching staff. Anne Marie made some orthographic suggestions, which were right on target.
This is heavily in Anne Marie's area. Anne Marie, are you comfortable with, uh, this one through five as it exists now?
I'm comfortable and, you know, again, I wanna work with you on this Clint, but I think this is right in alignment with some of the work that we're gonna, with, that we already planned to do this year.
Correct, agreed. And I am looking forward as well.
Holy moly, are we ready to go on to elements for administration and board?
I am.
Okay. The language that's there in purple is my language. Uh, I tried to rework that in light of Anne Marie's comments. I have to rely on Anne Marie to tell me if I was successful.
I just wanna take a second and look back at, oh, okay, so I, I think I had some questions on the original language because it, the original language said Groton Public Schools administrators will review GIA, GAI's evolution every two years or more frequently and provide the superintendent with, attendant with recommendations, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and I think I just wanted to know a little bit more here about what, what kinds of, what are we talking about here? So that I'm clear, because I think I fall under this, this category. You know, who are, who are we talking about in terms of the central administration? And then I know that there's some examples here in terms of attendance tracking, but, you know, can we be more specific? Because when I look at this, I, I wanna know who's involved and what specific things are, because it is asking for an annual efficiency report, you know, what kinds of things are we looking for?
I can only give you my personal response. Does somebody else wanna respond first?
So I, I'll, I'll respond briefly, Matthew. Thank you. So I think really the intent of this section, whether this captures it or not, but is the, for us to be continuing to look at and hopefully take advantage of productivity opportunities that generative AI will bring as well as functionality that we may or may not have had access to because of resource demands or other in the future. So this would be really speaking to our abilities to, can we use it where productivity gains are available? And where we can add functionality when needed. And this would be a regular look at that. I am uncomfortable with a formal report per se, but I certainly agree in spirit with this idea of where we can find efficiencies and additional functionality that we're not able to do now in service of teaching and learning to do that. Matthew, is that fair?
I think that's fair. I don't see the business of a formal report in this.
Okay, oh yeah, the, I, and I'm not quoting you.
Uh, I think the reason why I asked about that, because it says, um, every, the original language was every two years or more frequently. And it very, and it's also said, uh, Groton Public Schools administrators, and I wasn't sure if we were talking about building administrators. Now it specifically says central administration, so I am a little bit more comfortable with the way it's written now versus the original document or the last document that we had seen.
Okay, the, with regard, the review every two years, uh, the last draft in retrospect, and I'm totally responsible for this, was redundant because we talked about a review every eighteen to two months in two different places. And the, the correct place in that is the, the fourth section, which is mandated review cycle. So I took that out completely and that was my fault. You're welcome to come over to my house and beat me. Please not. Anyway, so I think we remove, we remove the business of any review, uh, into that last section, which we'll look at in a few minutes. I think Clint has, captures what I said. I think there are opportunities we're aware of and opportunities we haven't even conceived of yet to use AI to the benefit of administration. The low hanging fruit is gonna be maybe scheduling, the low hanging fruit is maybe going to be in human rela- human resources. I can't tell you what that is, but I, I would expect that human resources, once they realize that we have this, that we're committed to using AI to benefit the district and ask, ask your directors in the various departments, give it some thought, talk to Clint, see what we can conceptualize. I don't want to bind, those, those are, that's an EG, those are just examples of things that we might want to consider. Some of them can go, the others will certainly come. This is going so rapidly. So how would you, how would you guys like to handle th- this language? Would you like to leave it in for the first reading? And see what the, the full board says and come back and work on it later, or change it now?
Can you enlarge it? I, I can barely see it.
Why don't you take off my, uh, purple, because that's, I think, also including the reading.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did that help Andrea?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
I did put in central administration rather than administration, because I, I, I think that the decisions on how this is going to be used are gonna be driven by central administration. I would, on a personal basis, hope that central administration would in conju- would encourage the building su- the building principals to make suggestions to central administration for ways that they might discern that AI could be used on their particular levels. But I think it needs to be driven by central administration. What do you think, Anne Marie?
I think, I think that's fair. I think sometimes, you know, in the, um, the building leaders, um, get, they're so busy, um, running the buildings that sometimes, um, they may not have the opportunity to look at how um, something like this, um, can assist them. They'll, they'll use it and participate in training and, um, you know, then I'm sure embrace it, but it may, um, not be at the forefront of their mind in terms of, um, exploring it on their own.
Let me use the word generative again, and I, I'm gonna hope Clint agrees with me. Generative AI is not merely in what the documents are gonna be produced by these algorithms. It's also gonna be generative, I think. This is just, this, I don't have any data for this, it's just opinion. I think it's gonna be generative where you may have, pick on a school principal, A or B. He or she may not discern how it can be used at the building level to start with. But once they see it used in other, in other domains by central office and with the kids, I think they're going to generate their own ideas, which then, then I would encourage them to bring back to you guys at central office.
Agreed.
Agreed.
I have two things. Uh, one, I, I like Anne Marie had the, uh, the question about central administration. What, what exactly does that mean? And then I would think that uh, there would be workshops on this throughout the year. And I, I think that, that, I think that the, the building level administrators have to be involved in this. So, um, I don't think it cha- it just can't be top down. I think it has to be broadly across and, and again, through, uh, through, uh, professional development. And, and the other thing I have is just a small thing, and that is that I didn't see that ETC at the end. If you're not gonna say it, get it out of there.
Okay, so let me, let me try this. Central, I'm just throwing this in. Central administration will encourage building administration and departmental administration, or the superintendent will encourage departmental administrators and building administrators to, uh, participate in the development of new ideas for the benefit of the district, something like that.
Do you, do you think it might, might, might be just again, looking at grain size here, just to state that the, the, this, you know, the su- almost like what you do with regulations, that the, you, the board directs the superintendent to. May, maybe something to say that the superintendent will develop a process for us, uh, regular, regularly assessing, you know, what, what it is you're looking to do. So rather than getting into who and how often you're, I think what you really wanna say here is that this is going to require con- constant assessment, constant evaluation. Um, clearly you've bought into the committee work and the engagement of the entire school community to be in, to provide inputs to, to this, to this, to this work. So maybe, maybe it's just developing a process to, to regularly assess the things you want to assess around, um, um, genera- gener- generative. Uh, Clint, help me out here. Generative, what's the word you wanna use? Generative? AI?
Well, it's really a process to assess and leverage.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Beautiful, beautiful.
How is this different from the work that the committee, um, you know, we have a committee that's gonna be looking at the different things? Would this be part of the additional work of the committee?
I guess my take would be, it could be, but I think where we're trying to come down, and this may not be a fair differentiation here, but most of this is really intent on a policy around teaching and learning where this typically, or I think this area is really highlighting or focusing on productivity and functionality, um, from administrative processes as opposed to curriculum instruction assessment. At least that's how I have it in my head. If that's not clear, then we should probably modify it somehow.
Maybe we should take out the Board of Education completely on that, on that, the, the thing. So elements for administrative productivity and functionality and administrative functionality?
Uh, how about operational functionality?
I like that.
Okay. We'll include, i- i- as a header, does that clarify, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Okay, so now let's look at, at the text and massage the text so that it says what we want it to say.
I don't know what central administration can mean. It's, the superintendent is gonna do it. And forget about encouraging anything, anybody to do anything, because then they're gonna be doing their, their, their interpretation of this. No, the superintendent has to set the parameters. And that has to come through professional development as well.
Uh, and, uh, and share his, her, or her, his findings at a cow.
Get his, her.
You want his, her?
Well, we don't know if they will have a her in twelve years, so.
Just the superintendent.
Share the findings. Now we take out the et cetera?
Yes, take that out. Does that sound annoyed enough?
Okay.
Can I remove this part of our brainstorming?
Yes, please. Uh, maybe instead of EG, we want to have it's including but not limited to?
Any objections?
I, I think EG, E dot G dot comma, that's, that's the appropriate way to, to do that.
And didn't we decide about no, but not limited to?
Yeah.
We do wanna include that or we do not?
Do not.
I would say not.
Okay.
Okay. And the spacing looks weird just because it's, it's fully aligned.
Yeah, because you're justified.
Yeah, correct. We can, we can talk about that and just align the justifications with all the other policies later.
Are we comfortable with that? We move on to mandated review cycle.
I'm comfortable to share this with the Board of Educat- yes.
Okay.
Okay, the first paragraph was suggested by, uh, Anne Marie, taken from the, uh, Oregon Model AI Policy, which we had thanks to Jody.
Can we make this, this, just to keep it consistent?
Please.
Thank you. I'm gonna get rid of the note. Thank you, Anne Marie.
Andrea, comments on the first paragraph?
There's no.
I'm comfortable with this whole section.
So actually, I think I, I wanted to insert that and take out the second one.
Uh, we, I, I'm gonna push back on this one.
Yeah, that's okay. Go ahead and push back.
Well, I'd do it with love.
No, I, I, I didn't feel like it wasn't.
Okay. I'm not concerned with the specifics of the word for word for the language. We can massage the, the word. The intent is, given that the technology is metastasizing, hopefully in good ways. We, we need a comprehensive review, whether that review should be started eighteen months, two years, twelve months, I don't really care, as long as we have or more frequently is needed. But I think we need to state a timeframe. The board will change in January. Uh, we have board members now who have no idea of what went on three years ago, and this board member has no idea of what went on five years ago, because I wasn't here. So we need, I think we need to state the obvious, instead of framework, if you don't like the two years, I'm open to whatever you suggest, but I think it's
That two years has always bothered me. I don't think there should be a time limit on it. It should just be a comprehensive review.
It's not a time limit. It is
No, every two years.
At least every two years.
Eh, I don't think there should be any reference to time.
In that case, let me make a, a parallel example. We have adopted a communication policy, and I don't wanna talk about the, the contents of it. It's adopted unanimously by this committee. It was adopted unanimously by the board without any changes. And it is sat on a shelf because things, pressures are inevitable in this industry. There will always be stuff that is gonna bump something from happening unless it is articulated as a requirement. I think, and I, I truly believe that the nature of the beast of GAI is that it must be reviewed on a periodic basis. And if that periodic basis is too long, somebody can always say, in light of X, Y, Z, we shouldn't wait another year, we need to look at it now.
Right.
And that's my rationale. We have to put a framework in, otherwise it will be sitting on the shelf, because it's not requisite.
I, I think I saw the word regularly anyway. And with, with the, uh, nature of, of, um, AI, it's gonna have to be reviewed all the time. Forget every two years, that's way too long. And even more frequently, it just should be regularly.
Regularly is a marshmallow word. It doesn't mean anything. It doesn't have any specific meaning.
But I also feel like earlier in this policy, in this draft, there's a, there's an annual joint, um, report to the committee of the whole. So I think that will necessitate a regu- a quote unquote, regular review of this policy.
So maybe we should rephrase that second paragraph, and you may, you have a point there, Anne Marie. I, I recognize that. Maybe this should be reworded to say, based on the board response to the annual review, where the, the board, the Board of Education will determine, comma, based on the response of the annual review, whether a, uh, policy review is necessary.
Actually, um, no, um, Matthew, respectfully, I feel like this second paragraph is redundant based on the first paragraph. Actually, um, no, um, Matthew, respectfully, I feel like this second paragraph is redundant based on the first paragraph. I feel like it's not needed. I think it's saying the same thing wi- with the exception of adding a timeframe.
Which I think is the, that's like building an arch and taking out the keystone.
Yeah, and I, and I don't feel like it's necessary because of the, eh, the joint annual repo-, I mean, the, the, yeah, the joint annual report to the, to the cow.
I agree, I agree.
We need some reference to, in, in that section, that, that annual reference is to be the determin-, eh, that the board is, go back to that other piece and say the, the annual reference will be made to the board, as we have. Based on that reference, the board will determine whether review is necessary, but.
Yeah, I mean, the thing about it though, and, and I understand where you're going with that, is that the annual review shouldn't be completely determined upon the, um, upon the, um, the, um, like, that should be one of the factors, but it shouldn't be the only factor, right? The board, uh, that, that presentation, that might be one of the factors, but that maybe like, um, the, the Groton Teaching and Learning Collaborative that says, hey, we need to review this. It might be the superintendent that says we might need to review the policy. It might be, um, the teachers that come forward and say, we might need to review the policy. It might be Clint, um, who says we might, or the, um,
And that's covered, and that's covered with, where more frequently is needed. This is, you know, I, I know you respect me, so I won't, and I know that I respect you, so we don't think, have to say with due respect because it's, it's deeply felt. It's deeply felt on this side, and I believe on the other.
Anne, Anne Marie, I.
I would not be able to support taking out some kind of timeframe.
I agree with Anne Marie that it says the same thing as the first, and I thought that the first time I read it, but I just thought I was being really.
If, if we added to the first sentence of the first paragraph, including policy or some other more elegant way to do it and make it specific, would that suffice, Matthew?
Uh, shh, propose some language so I can respond to it.
So it's specifically, we're to use of A, recommend updates to the Board of Ed, addresses safety, blah, 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 and other relevant areas, including policy.
So should we?
Meaning recommended updates.
The board, maybe it's the board will review its, uh, it's, you know what? There's two things where I think we may be conflating operations and we may have conflated operations and policy in this thing. I'm not sure. Let me try this out. If we substituted the word for the board, for board instead of district, the board will review the administration, administrations. It's hard to want to do it. I'm not sure of how to word this, but the board is responsible for the policy, not the administration. The administration is responsible for the operationalization of the policy. As a board member, and I cannot speak for the whole board, I think the board, board needs to define how often it wants its policy reviewed.
And one of the things.
If, if, if Andrea and I disagree on the length of time, that's a, that's a, that's a fair game for the whole board to, uh, to, to weigh in on.
I really like what Anne Marie talked about regarding the, there, there are a variety of inputs that the, the administration will, or the superintendent will have to, um, to draw, draw, um, conclusions about or to inform the use of AI in the district. Um, so, so you, I think that's really an important piece of it. So administratively, the superintendent, his or her team, you're constantly reviewing, you're getting, you, you're talking to various people, you're talking to departments, you get, you're getting information and you're working through that and you're, and you're making decisions based upon that. I think the board's role will be to, to take what the superintendent is sharing with the board in terms of the various inputs the, the superintendent is getting and the work that's going on in the district to, to leverage and do all the things you want to do with AI. For the board then to say, we need to go back into our policy and ensure that our policy is providing the right level of guidance for this work to continue. Because that, because you're going, that, that landscape is going to continue to shift, which will, which will require communicating with your superintendent, but also being nimble to go back into your policy regularly to see if it's keeping up and, and it's providing the right level of direction.
Right, and it should say the board. It should say the board, because who's the district? How will the district regularly review this?
I think it should be the board.
I think the district.
I think the board. And, and the reason I, I, I go back to this communication policy because the communication policy states things that the the district needs to do. It states six or eight or 10 of them. There's no illusion that we're going to do all of them at once, but in the last two and a half years, we haven't done one of them. Oh, and I take that back. I take that back. We've done the internal communications. We've done a lot of things on internal communications, community outreach, we haven't done any. Uh, and it's one of the reasons we've suffered it and when we've done before the, uh, council, but that's an aside. No, unless the board mandates some minimal framework for timing of review, this will just not be done. That's my experience. There is just simply too much pressure on administration from the state, SED, now from the federal government. There's so much out there that unless it's, it's articulated in stone, it is, ain't going to happen. I got to turn on my light because I'm not seeing well. I'll be back in 30 seconds.
Is there a world where we can bring language to the full Board of Ed that includes this and have a discussion?
Maybe the thing to bring it to the Board of Ed is to have oh, like a Chinese restaurant, or at least when I was growing up, column A and column B. And say, these are two different approaches. We did, we did not reach consensus on the approach that's appropriate to take. We bring you both approaches and let you, uh, weigh in on them both. Neither of them is perfect.
I, I would, I just want to say, you know, um, Matthew, you just said something that's very input, eh, in, I, I think that has, that you, you said something very valuable, but strikes me in a way that is, um, is really hard to hear. And I, you know, I know I've only been here now less than a year. I don't know what month I'm in. Maybe month nine or so, and I certainly can't speak, um, uh, with a lot of experience to what hap-, what has happened with the communications situation, other than I know that we've had two presentations, one that has happened pretty recently to the Committee of the Whole, and I think that it, it was very well received. Um, and then we had one, um, one communications subcommittee meeting that happened maybe back in like December or so. And I think that was also very well received. I attended that subcommittee meeting and, and it was pretty positive. Now, I know there's a communications plan. I don't know when it was developed, and I don't know wh- what the schedule was for maybe updating that plans. I don't know if it was developed five years ago, three years ago, one year ago. You know, again, I can't speak to a lot of these things, but, a- and I maybe have misunderstood the statement that you just made. But, um, my understanding based on what you said is, you know, in terms of not putting, you know, if we don't put a timeframe on it, then, um, you know, things are basically not going to get done. And to me, that speaks to a lack of, almost like a lack of, um, trust, that, um, you know, that if it's not, if there's not a timeframe, if, if two, the word every two years is not put in this document, that you don't believe that, you know, people like Clinton and I, or Susan, or whomever, are going to follow through on, on what we, you know, on, on what our jobs are. And that's, um, that's hard for me to hear because I, I believe that we do the very best that we can to, you know, if something's written in policy, or if something's one of our responsibilities, that we are going to, in fact, you know, do what we're supposed to do. And so I'm not fighting these, these words, you know, a timeframe, because, um, I don't want to do what I'm supposed to do. Um, I just feel like, you know, um, there are, there are things that, um, regard, you know, there are needs that are going to come up, again, through the GTLC, through a, a specific committee, through the professional development, through the feedback that we get from our teachers or whomever, our administrators, that are going to cause us to, to, um, see a need for review. And then there are things that are going to be happening because we're focused on math, or because we're looking at our needs and literacy that are going to have our attention beyond that for the time being. And so, um, you know, that, that's just my input. I, I don't believe that you're saying, um, saying things, maybe, you know, I don't believe that that's, that's what you're saying, but that's certainly the, um, the message that may be received if the, um, if there, there has to be a timeframe on this. That's just my input.
I agree.
Perhaps I shouldn't have said this in this, said what I said in the forum, but what I said, I said, there is no sin of commission. There is no sin of we will not, we, administration are not going to do this. We're going to block it. That was never, never embedded in what I said. What I said was that there are so many competing demands on administration that what everybody agreed needed to be done, didn't get done. The reason it didn't get done was, was, was not a matter of unprincipled behavior whatsoever. It just didn't get to it. It didn't get to it. And I mean, we can, we can meet offline if you want to talk about this in length. I would not object to that whatsoever. But we are, everybody online is committed to this being the best possible district it's, it can be. Perfection is beyond human grasp, but that is, that is the goal. We want to be perfect, even though we know we're never going to achieve it. And it breaks my heart that we have suffered. Not because of anything, anybody did wrong, but because of opportunities that we had didn't go get fulfilled. We can talk about that later. There's no evil in what I'm saying. But neither can I deny the reality of things not happening. And I, I'm open to any framework of timing, but with my breath, I will fight to have a, a minimum amount of time stated. And I don't know why you're fighting it. I don't know why you're fighting it. This is a generic you. It's not, it's not directed at anybody. I don't know why you're fighting it because we know that this technology is growing so, so amazingly quickly that whatever we do here, however good it is, if it's good, it's going to be outdated very quickly. So why don't we just acknowledge that? And, and say, we're going to look at it at a regular basis, but define what we mean by it, because if we don't define it, we risk it just being missed. Not out of malice, but missed nonetheless. Jody?
In the spirit of not missing it, I'm, I'm thinking back again as a su-, as my previous role as a superintendent and, and, and thinking about this policy and thinking about a mandated review cycle, which I think is a really, it's a good concept. I think it's worthy of discussion and, and, and thinking. One of the ways to ensure that this won't be missed is to use current, not systems, but current and, and current actions or current behaviors that have become part of how Groton does its work. So I, for example, when I was in my previous district, I, every ti-, every month, I, I, every board meeting, I gave a superintendent's report to the board. It was public. It was usually 10 to 15 minutes and included a variety of different things that, eh, that, that were, that I deemed were important. Um, there, and there were certain things, depending on the time, where I always made sure I addressed that particular thing we, that we were addressing. At, at the time, it had to do with, um, it had to do with balancing our schools. Every single one of my superintendent reports talked about the work that was going on around, around balancing our elementary schools. So what, what I, when I think my, thinking about this, what does the superintendent do to ensure the board is up to date regarding the work that's going on with GAI in the district? If, if your superintendent currently has a board report that she delivers, maybe that's where the board monthly hears about the work that's going on in the district around GAI. And then the board, so, so that, so the actual cycle is the superintendent working with her team to, to ensure that work is going on and, and collecting information from her team to share in her superintendent report to the board. So the, the board and your community is aware of those efforts. And through that, the board's position would then be, or determination would be, we've heard five or six reports now provided by the superintendent on the work that's going on with AI. At our next board meeting, we'd like the superintendent to make a recommendation, um, as to whether or not, um, the policy is providing the right level of guidance for the district to continue its work. And then that would be, then the, the chair of the board would, would adjourn that just determination back to the policy committee to work with the superintendent in revising the policy, or not revising the policy, but, you know, studying it. So you have things that you do currently that will ensure that this issue and these procedures and, and the, and the level of leveraging isn't going to, um, sit on a bookshelf somewhere, and the policy is out there to, for the board's regular review based on what the board is receiving from the superintendent in her report.
Would you think it, are you suggesting, or am I reading into this, that you're thinking a solution might be that the don't let me put words in there, the superintendent will report every month, or every, every month, or every other month on, uh, the district's use of AI?
Yeah, and, and if you're, you're not, that's exactly right. But, but rather than just something report on it, the, if, if the superintendent provides, and I think most superintendents provide the board a, a, um, report, whether it's a written report or it's a report delivered at the board meeting. And if not, then it would be, the, the superintendent will provide the board updates, um, every other month as part of, part of an agenda item on the, a standing agenda item on the, on the boards, for the board meeting, to, to provide a, a, a summary of the work that's going on in the district, up, updating the board on, on, on the, on the continued work in, in the area of, um, artificial intelligence, something like that. But then, but then that would cause, that would, then the board can deliberate and say, okay, we've heard now from our superintendent, we've, we've heard several reports, and it sounds as though, you know, this, this, and this. And so let's, is, this may be a good opportunity for us now to review our policy. So I'm going to, let's have the policy committee look at the policy with the superintendent to determine if the policy is providing the right kind of direction for the, for the district to continue its work, or, or go to that next level of work.
Andrea, how do you feel about asking Clint and Jody to wordsmith that in real time?
Yes, as long as, uh, every other month is in there. Because there are going to be boards that say, uh, oh, well, we can't talk about that now because that, it's supposed to be every other month. You know, just take the time limit out of there. She should be doing exactly what Jody said, without that every other month or time limit of any kind. Believe me, if there's a problem, it's going to arise and it's going to have to be addressed.
Yeah. Clint, I don't want to volunteer you, but I'd be happy to, to work with you on, on that, um, to see if we, we can put together a process, rather than thinking of it in terms of, um, um, time, we can think of it in terms of process and, and use what currently exists as a way to capture AI and to, to, um, maximize that.
I, makes sense to me, and I would be happy to do it. I don't think we have time tonight, but for you and I to meet offline to do that, yes.
Are you thinking of kind of renaming number four to mandated review process rather than cycle?
Oh, I like that. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'm the outsider here, so.
Would you like to sit in on that meeting? It's, it's going to be by Zoom. Would you like to sit in on that meeting so that we have one committee member present?
When did you address that, Jim?
You, Andrea, would you like, uh?
Oh, sure.
I sat in on the last meeting with, uh, Clint and Anne Marie, and you're as much of a member of this committee as I am. Would you like to be our representative at that meeting? I sat in on the last meeting with, uh, Clint and Anne Marie, and you're as much of a member of this committee as I am. Would you like to be our representative at that meeting?
I would like that indeed, yes.
Good.
I just hope I can drag this, this, um, wound back with me. Never mind.
Okay, so.
We'll make it work, Andrea. No worries. All right, we are on to the last one. Yes, Matthew?
Okay, uh, the last one. Any comments?
Is, is this the last one, or was there one before that where we, where I had some things, um, or is there one after this? No, if it's the last one, there's not one after this.
No, this is, we're, we're the last ones. We, I'm.
Wasn't there one where I said something about whom and you liked that? Remember that?
Uh, where, where are we on that one? Yes, yes, yes. I didn't mark it on my sheet. Tell me where we are.
I don't know.
Uh, we'll find it, we'll find it before you have the meeting with Clint and.
All right, okay.
And we'll get it in. We've got a whom, we've got a loose whom that we've got to put in its proper place.
Yeah, yeah, there were, there are a couple of little things in there that I wanted to remind you. Because there was a misplaced modifier. Oh, my heavens.
Can't have, can't have that.
Seventy years of age, and I'm still misplacing my modifiers. I can't.
Wasn't you, Matthew?
Okay, supplemental policy elements, uh, I think Andrea is correct in saying that highly valued is probably, uh, sweet but not necessary, but the intent was, Jody, to, 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 to let you know how much this pilgrim, and I think the whole committee and administration, is indebted to you for, for your support and assistance. We can take it out of the paper. I don't care. We can delete it, as long as you know it.
No, I've enjoyed working with you guys, and, and, and I appreciate that.
The sentiment I, I share, Jody. The wording, not so much.
Okay, well, it, it, it accomplished its goal. Jody knows.
Yes, it did.
We love him.
Great.
Okay, take out highly valued, for God's sakes.
We'll see how Jody does with our next.
Why don't we make it cheap, the, the Board of Education and GPS administrators will continue there.
It's, it's the board, not the Board of Education, just the board.
Great.
So, let me ask this. Do we want, eh, when do you got, when do you folks think you can all get together? Because I'm wondering if we can lock this up by having, uh, you guys work on that last, that, that one section, mandated review process section, and we could have one more meeting this month and keep it under a half an hour and be able to give it to the board for action for a first reading this month. Is that feasible? If it's not, we'll do it next month.
I, I, I can be flexible, so I'll leave that up to, to, to you as to what your availability is. I, I can be flexible.
Are they Zoom, or are they in?
All Zoom, all Zoom.
Okay.
So I, I, I am interested in moving this forward as well. I have a, some obligations this week. I can, uh, be easily reached and get to some of this work done on Monday and, uh, of next week, and, uh, I will be in for the remainder of the summer, so.
Would one of you prefer to be the honcho, or would you want me to call everybody and, and fix a day? Can you, Clint, you?
What, what, if, if, if it's, if it pleases the chair, I'm happy to coordinate with Jody and Andrea and get this done early next week. Is that fair?
Is it okay with Andrea?
Yes.
Jody?
It's perfect, perfect.
So shall it be, so, so, so shall it be done.
I will reach out tomorrow morning. First thing, we can coordinate calendars and see what works for everyone.
The only day I'm not available ever is Tuesday morning.
Fair enough. I will, I will avoid it.
So are you guys up for, guys and gals, up for a half hour meeting this month in, and if we're lucky enough to have a product in time to bring it to the board by the end of this month for a first reading? Well, we won't schedule anything until after you've had your, your session, and we know if we have a product.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
Not for me. Thank you, everyone.
Well, this has been amazing. Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, everybody.
If, uh, uh, Anne Marie, can you stay on for just a minute?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You wanna, you wanna close down the meeting, so we can stop recording?
That's what we're about to do. We're, I have a motion to adjourn on the floor. I second the motion. It's non-debatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
We, you can't vote here, Anne Marie. And we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.